It's two o'clock and we're gonna start the meeting. Appreciate everybody for being here today and joining in with us. We have one commissioner out of town, Commissioner Murphy, leaves us for six. And we're gonna start, if you will, rise with the invocation led by District Ben Pierce of Public Works and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Val Cullen.
Let's pray, y'all. Dear Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity to just serve you in these capacities. Lord God, we just continue to ask that you will give us wisdom and just discernment. Pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. First item on the agenda today, well first off, we have four items on the agenda, but the last item, discussing discussion regarding the proposed lease for St. Simon Boating and Fishing Club will not be discussed today. Commissioner Murphy, he's been involved in this from the get-go and since he's not here today, he asked that we put it off to the next work session so he could be here and be a part of that discussion and that's what we're gonna do. So we'll just have the other three items, one, two, and three. First item, receive a presentation on Altama Connector Corridor project. Ben?
Thank you. And good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Ben Pierce and I serve as your staff's project manager for planning and design. And we're here to give you just a brief presentation about where we're at, where we've been, and kind of what are some of the next phases that we're looking at here. You can kind of see, we've handed out 11 by 17 aerial image rendering of the basic scope of the project. Back earlier this month, on April 1st, we had a 60% plan review meeting with our consultant, Pond, who's here today to help with the presentation. At that time, we looked at some design features, drainage, roadway improvements, and they're currently still in the process of making those comment adjustments. And just to kind of give you a little overview, we have an overall project budget of $3.25 million with just a little shy of $3 million remaining in the project. So in addition to the project design, giving you some specifics of the project design, one of the things that we're asking for as a staff is authorization to move ahead to acquiring right-of-way. We've got some details on that if you have any questions. And then also moving ahead with authorization to solicit for bids for construction. So you can kind of see a little bit on the overhead and also on your handout where the beginning and the ending of the projects are gonna be, or project is gonna be, and kind of some of the, from a larger scale of what's gonna, what's gonna happen out there and what we've put together so far. The next stages are gonna be DOT permitting, final plans, and right-of-way acquisitions. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin Skinner and he's gonna give some details of what we've done so far.
Thank you, Ben, and thank you Commissioners for having us here. I'm Kevin Skinner with Pond and Company. We were hired by the county to do the engineering design. I have a coworker here.
I'm Daniel Savitt with Pond and Company. I'm the lead engineer for this one. Thanks for having us.
So I've got a PowerPoint presentation that's similar to what we looked at last time. I know there's a couple of new Commissioners, but some of y'all may remember some of the details here, so I'll jump right into it. First, looking at what we studied, this is obviously the intersection of Altama and 25 Spur with the Home Depot on the left of the graphic and buffet in the top-left and car dealership and such. So we studied several of the intersections with the tube counts, looking at volume of cars, studying crash data and accident history to really gather all of what's going on. In addition, we had our traffic engineers sit through AM and PM peak hour traffic to see firsthand some of the things that we've been hearing from county. Looking at some of the issues, the problems, first, I'm sure as you're aware, at the exit from the bank and Chick-fil-A on the south and Burger King and the Golden Corral, there's obviously a congestion area there. The problem is so many turning movements happening in one specific area in addition to it being so close to 25 Spur, it causes a lot of jamming. And we'll get into some of the specific solutions later, but you have two through lanes coming toward the Spur and then of those two lanes, the left lane is a direct entry into the turn lane, we call it a trap. So if you're trying to go straight, you essentially have to weave right. And also of those two lanes through, the right lane, if you're trying to get into the right turn lane, you have to weave into the existing lane that has, that from the Chick-fil-A and the bank has what's called a free flow into it. So we got a lot of bottlenecking occurring at that area, so it's jamming up, you have a lot of accidents, that's one of the major issues of the project. The second is the through lane traffic. You do have, in the eastbound direction, you do have two through lanes crossing 25 Spur, but with the weave, you're not really getting the full use of those through lanes. So we'll talk about how we address that problem later in the solutions. Next, the westbound movement, coming from Walmart towards Home Depot, westbound, you really have one through lane crossing the Spur. There's a dedicated right turn lane right at the Applebee's, turning right onto northbound Spur, and you have dual left turn lanes, but we'll be addressing the queuing there. It takes several cycles, as I'm sure you know, to get through there on the westbound Further down at Merchant's Way, you have the four-lane section, there's really no dedicated left turn lane, there's no safe place to stop and make that turning movement. So a turning, a left vehicle turning movement would clog up the through movement in the eastbound and the westbound direction. So we'll look at how we address that as well. Some of the proposed improvements, this is an overview, which I think is identical to the handout you have, 11 by 17. There is a legend on there that shows exactly what you're looking at. The orange is a raised concrete island, so it's, it's just a few inches, it's a six-inch raised island, and it does restrict movement. So part of the solution is to restrict turning movements, to cut down on the potential for impacts and channelize people to a safer location. So let's look at some of the specific areas. This is back, and feel free to jump in and interrupt me at any time if you have any questions. We'll also have time for Q and A after this. So in terms of the Walmart, I'm sorry, the Home Depot Chick-fil-A bank area, the improvements we're proposing are the large island that's, you see the orange triangular wedge, that would restrict a left turn out of Chick-fil-A and the bank, but would require people to turn right towards the Spur. It does allow for folks to go toward the left, toward the Home Depot building and make use of their intermediate access, which you could make a left in front of Home Depot. But this would cut down on the congestion at the Chick-fil-A exit by forcing folks to go right. It would allow lefts in and rights out, and you can see right in from Home Depot, turning down to Chick-fil-A.
Do you have like a laser pointer?
Yes.
Make it easy for everyone.
Oh, okay. I could do it on this board only, I believe.
That's fine.
But coming from Chick-fil-A is not visible here, but, so right now, I think you have a lot of folks trying to make this left turn movement out of here, and that's really causing a lot of problems. It's backing up and then there's limited visibility and also in terms of being so close to the Spur, there's queuing that backs up on Altama, so unless people leave the intersection open, it becomes jammed and just gets exponentially worse.
Where are the people that are gonna leave SunTrust and Chick-fil-A that need to turn left there to go through the Home Depot parking lot?
They could. We're also allowing to turn right and then make a U-turn at the Spur, and so...
What? What, a U-turn at the Spur?
I'll go on to the next graphic, let's see. Let's see here. This lane would allow a U-turn, the left of the dual lefts. So if you were moving, let's see, go back, this is back toward the Home Depot. If someone was going to exit Chick-fil-A or Home Depot to go to the left on Altama, there is a exit here at Home Depot that can be utilized, or for someone getting onto the Spur would simply go right and then make a right or a right and then a left. This also restricts movements coming out of the buffet and Burger King to require only a right turn, this movement.
Wouldn't we have to put some sort of direction for them, telling them to go through the parking lot and go out down there?
Um...
Sign it? I know that's private property, but at the same time...
Yeah. The, the legal fix is to turn right and make a U-turn at the Spur. Now, people would figure out that this entrance here is still open and it's still allowed to make the left turn movement here as well.
How would Home Depot feel about that? Because you know, you know they're gonna, they're gonna pick up extra traffic?
Well, I think a lot of people are using that already, is what we've, that you can make a left here, or you can make a left here. There's also a third entrance behind the building, I think there's somewhat of a garden center here, but behind the Home Depot building, there's a third access point that's more for deliveries, but they have three access points on Altama. So there is, clearly there are movements that are restricted, that is the purpose. Some people are inconvenienced from making the immediate turn that they want. It comes at a trade-off of improved safety and improved flow, so yes, there are drawbacks or trade-offs, you might say.
How is that gonna benefit flow? I can see how it might benefit safety, but, but to me, it's gonna further restrict flow.
Well, one of the improvements is you're adding a second through lane, so the east-west movement right now essentially has one utilized lane crossing the Spur. With these improvements, we've widened slightly in here to provide a longer dedicated right turn lane as well as two through lanes that line up adequately. So you're essentially moving twice as many cars straight across and you're providing more space to stack left turns and right turns. So you're getting significantly more cars through the intersection with these improvements in the eastbound and the westbound. Over here, you're completely doubling, you have one lane right now and we are providing a second lane. The impacts are, we're widening slightly through the Applebee's, I think this is a bank, the Arby's, and Captain D's here to provide two through lanes in the westbound movement, and then moving the existing right turn lane north just a little bit into this grassy area. It still avoids the Applebee's parking lot, but you're getting much better flow east to west, so the congestion will be much less, which I think is part of the main purpose of the project.
So what you're saying is, we're gonna force them to go right?
Yeah.
They're just gonna have to live with it?
Well, we're providing so many other improvements that I think you'll find the overall situation is better for everyone.
Well, I mean, I agree.
And safety as well.
That's the worst intersection you can get. I mean, I agree with you 100%, I'm just saying, and without short-footing a red light right there, I don't see how you're gonna control that any other way.
Right. We have a complete traffic study that has all the modeling and lots of technical data. If someone were to ask, how are you sure this is going to work? We can't be sure 100%, but what we do is we do the best we can with the models, with knowing the peak hour volumes and looking at the crash data, what type of collisions are happening, whether side swipes or rear ends, it's indicative of what's the problem here. You can look at the data and determine what the problem is. And so these improvements will greatly increase the east-west movement as well as getting more cars onto the Spur quickly. Let me go on to some of the further areas. We looked at this, I think we addressed adding the right turn lanes, we're also adding a, a right turn lane from the Spur, I'm sorry, from Altama onto, I forget the name of this road, Golden Isles Parkway at the Burger King and the buffet. And this will require changes to the traffic signal, which will be coordinated with Georgia DOT. And so as you see, the raised median would restrict movements across, whereas right now you have a painted stripe where people occasionally do crazy things, as you know. Also, we're adding some pedestrian improvements. You see the yellow shading is proposed sidewalk on the north side, Applebee's and the Golden Corral buffet. We're modifying things slightly from here, but you'll get a few pedestrian improvements along with this project. Further down towards Merchant's Way, prior to this, you had a four-lane section, meaning just two travel lanes in each direction, where a left turner would stop in the through lane. And now we proposed to add a dedicated left turn lane, you can see right there, so folks can get out of the way of the travel and wait for a gap before they turn in each direction, east and west. There's a lot of crashes that we found here at the Arby's Wendy's area, getting in and out of the mall especially. Moving further east at, east of Merchant's Way, Walmart is right here, which currently there's no dedicated left turn lane into the Walmart. So with the improvements we're showing, we have space to add 12-foot deceleration and a little bit of storage to get into Walmart, which we think would help significantly. There's a few restrictions at, let's see, let me go back to this. Daniel, do you wanna speak to the, at Boater's Way? This, this left-in, left, this has a left-out only proposed, there's just not enough space to get to, to get a full left-in at Boater's Way, that's the name of it, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So currently at Boater's Way, you have a, is open, you can make lefts out, lefts in, right in, right out. Due to adding a dedicated left turn into the Walmart parking lot, it's a little, on the, on the construction plans, it's a little more clear, there's not enough storage to add a left turn onto Boater's Way. However, if you go just past it, you could see on the top there, there is a left turn into that shopping center there to the, on the east side of Boater's Way, which has access to the west side of Boater's Way. So it has interparcial access there, so you can get to both parcels that way.
I was gonna try and find the overall view to have you look at that. Okay, yeah, here's what, what we're speaking of here, in this region. Okay. Let's go toward the last part, and the construction cost is estimated at 2.1 million. This includes all the raised median as well as overlaying the road and a little bit of leveling. There's some drainage improvements that we're adjusting right now and tweaking some things, but it's pretty much ready to go to right-of-way acquisition pending the commission approval. We estimate right-of-way and easements to be approximately 250,000, and then utilities about 200,000, which would include some waterline relocation as well as reimbursable Georgia Power and other utilities. So that stays within the budget at 2.55 million dollars. I guess we can open up to questions, or Ben, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just a couple things regarding right-of-way, which is what we're looking for authorization to move ahead with now. With right-of-way, again, it's, the detailed plans have more information on this, but average, maybe 10 or 15 feet. Some areas, we're taking just the corner of the property, but just the thing to keep in mind about the right-of-way acquisition is that we're not acquiring property beyond the parking spaces. We're not getting into the parking of the bank or Applebee's or Arby's or Captain D's or even the Golden Corral. We're not, all that area that you have right now between the road and where their curb is for their parking, that's where all the improvements are happening. That's where the lane widening and the sidewalk and all that, that's where everything is occurring. And so that's the important thing to remember about the right-of-way acquisition. When we move ahead and, and put the plants together and the deed descriptions together, is that, is that everything is staying in that kind of grassy ditch area there off to the, to the north-hand side, which a lot of, a lot of it is, is off of county right-of-way. We're looking at some easements, in terms of permanent right-of-way, it's, it's very minimum through that area. And, and on the construction cost, this was the construction cost from the, from the 60% plans. Now, there were some things that we looked at with the 60% plans that will help us reduce cost significantly, particularly drainage in the middle of the road. We were looking at, because of the way the road was pitched, we have to provide some, some drainage in the medians. We think that we can, we can eliminate those, those drainage structures in the medians if we re-elevate and re-slope the roads going away from the medians. So that's gonna significantly drop the costs, not just in material and labor, but also in traffic control. Construction estimates, you know, can vary depending on season, depending on location of the project, and whether or not night work is, is permitted for this, for this type of operation, just as internally, we have discussed the opportunity of opening up for night work, particularly on the resurfacing, some of the widening, the drainage work, the median work, all that will have to be done during the day. Construction duration, we're looking at probably about four or five months on this because of how complex and how wide this project is. Timeframe, you know, there's really no good time to do this project, but we, we're thinking as a staff after, after the Christmas season, when this is not as busy. It is still busy all the year round, but particularly after the holiday season, it would be a better time to start that. And we believe that if we can move ahead with right-of-way acquisition, with submitting to the DOT for permitting and moving ahead with solicitation, I don't see any problem with us meeting that, that deadline.
What did you say about the DOT permitting, that's still, that's not found?
Correct. So within the next few weeks, we hope to meet with the District Five office up in Jessup to discuss what, what the application's gonna look like, what the impacts are gonna be on the state right-of-way. Yes, sir?
Well, nothing surprised to say, in the conversations, we talked to the DOT about curb cuts off of the Spur and basically the answer to that is not in your lifetime. And so there were several options there in front of the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond or behind the Chick-fil-A and, but Commissioner Browning, I think you ran that flag up the pole, didn't you? And that's just not gonna happen, is that, was that basically what you concluded?
Yes, sir. I hate to hear people say we can't do something when I think we can, because, you know, from, you know, from the get-go, I think everybody in this room agrees that the issue is right over here between Chick-fil-A, SunTrust Bank, Golden Corral, how... how all that traffic is interacting right there close to the spur. All this other stuff on the spur and going back out east or north, whichever direction you wanna call it. I, I understand as we grow and move forward, you know, these are things that probably, you know, getting them done now, you know, keep us from having to come back and, you know, revisit and do all this stuff later, fund it later. But that's not gonna help us down here, in my mind. It is not going to help us down here. And I, I, I understand your modeling and all that kinda stuff, but I'm just talking, Mike Browning's common sense and what I see out there. That's all I'm talking about. And I just do not see this helping. Well, I, yeah, I see it helping in the sense that people's not gonna be sitting there piling up, but they're gonna be going in the direction they don't wanna go. That's the problem. Well, and, and, so, so, you know, I've, I've said this before, and we have talked today at GDOT. I've talked about the in and out at Bass Pro in Savannah off of four-lane roads, very similar to our spur out here. People can get into Bass Pro, then get out of Bass Pro. We could do the same thing with these shopping centers. If you're in a shopping center and you don't wanna have to cross this road or get on this road, we could do the same thing, but GDOT is not a willing partner right now. And we could find a way out of this parking lot with Chick-fil-A. We could come down here by Chick-fil-A to the backside end and get onto that spur. Anybody wants to get on this spur rather than coming out here?
That, that would be one of the greatest relief points if we could.
Anybody wants to get on that spur and go back towards St. Simon's wherever, that would, that would be.
Right here.
And to say you can't do that. I mean, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I got a little bit of common sense, and that would get people out of here that don't wanna have to go back and get in over here by the garden center, you know, for no good reason, other than we just don't, there's, we have very, I understand, y'all got very few options. You know, if I were you guys, I would've come up with the same crazy stuff. I would've come up with, because you got no option.
Well, obviously, obviously, if the real estate were available, right-of-way was available, it would aim, but it's not. And if you look down here at proposed, proposed right-of-way, there just ain't much there. I mean, you can, obviously, if you could throw down some more pavement, you can move people quicker, but there's, unless you're gonna run them over the Golden Corral restaurant, you, you just.
Well, I, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna finish my part by saying.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's fine. I, I, this, this is a good traffic plan, I mean, for the entire area, given what we have to work with. I am hopeful that we are not gonna give up on trying to find a way to get people out of, even the Sears, or it used to be Sears, but that shopping center. But if, but if we can find a way to get people out of the Home Depot Chick-fil-A area, onto the spur, let them turn and go back south. The same with over here at the Golden Corral, if they could get, get back onto the spur out of that shopping center and across the street. It may take us a while to get it done, but I think we can get it done if we lean on GDOT enough, and that's what we're gonna have to.
Yeah, so what does GDOT say is the reason why they won't grant it? I, I, I mean, I was in the meeting with you, but I can't remember.
Something, Dave, is it, is it caused it's classified as a limited access highway?
I believe so, yes, sir. We're gonna, we're gonna give it one more shot. We gotta meet with the District Five folks.
Yeah. These, these things are doable, and, and, and they'll work, what I talked about.
And I know our state reps are interested in this intersection, so maybe we could get help with them.
But we're not gonna get those today. And what we're here for today is moving ahead with the right, right-of-way, authorize and move ahead with right-of-way acquisition. And so I'm gonna, we have a consensus to do that.
I think we ought to move forward with the right-of-way acquisition.
No, I agree.
All right. So you've got authorization to move forward with the right-of-way acquisition, and now.
Just to add a clear, clarity, if we do acquire these right-of-ways and we come up with other options and other plan, we're not stuck to this at this point, but I agree to this. Is that right?
I would say that, I, oh, my.
Yeah, I hadn't said what I want.
This is not gonna do everything we wanted to do, but I think all this needs to be done. But, but it's not gonna.
Pure, it's not, it's not gonna be a utopia out there.
It is not gonna fix the problems we have.
Yeah, I mean, but I think, I mean, there are a lot of concerns about different areas along this plan that, that, you know, people have talked about, have talked to me about. And I, I'm with you, I'm not sure. I'd rather have the better plan, the best plan we can for it than to be, if, if the right-of-way acquisition causes us to say we're on the path to doing this completely, and it eliminates any chance of any changes or modifications, then I'm not too comfortable with that. But if it's, it's to go ahead and, and start the process until we get more information, then I don't have a problem with that.
Well, with the things that I believe need to be done, really have nothing to do with this right-of-way acquisition. The right-of-way acquisition, as I see it, has to be done to make all these improvements. So you either make these improvements or you don't. And, and I, I agree with all that.
So if, if we, if we get the other cuts on this spur of Golden Isles Parkway, would that alter what you all propose here in any way?
No, sir. I mean, with, with us making improvements here at this intersection, this is gonna be a, a good, a good thing for GDOT, because we're improving the efficiency of the intersection, and from GDOT's perspective, now, we haven't met with them, but I would imagine that they would want to try this option before they move it ahead and give authorization for right-in, right-out type of access onto limited access.
This might facilitate down the road.
Yeah, yeah, I could.
Our plea to the, you know.
I think it could.
We've done everything, we've done everything we can do with the dirt that's available. And now we need some help.
And one of the things that, that I see in other, other intersections, with this rollover, raised curb, concrete curb, is, is people go around all the time, turn, turn the wrong way into, I mean, we've, we've been manipulating that on, on a lot of the shopping centers, strip centers, and, and people just go the way they wanna go anyway.
We get that. And, and from your, from your schematic, from what you have on your aerial here, we have moved up the, the nose there as you turn left into the Burger King, and as you turn right out of the Burger King area, we've, we've overlapped those a little bit more to try to encourage people not to make that left-hand turn. But you're exactly right. You know, somebody at 12 o'clock at night, I mean, it's, it's, it's human nature to try to do what they want to.
I, I just, this turning left out of the Chick-fil-A shopping center and, and, and the thinking here of going through the Home Depot parking lot, that just doesn't seem safe to me. I mean, I don't know, you know, you've got people in parking lots, you got people trying to, to go left and, 'cause if you, if you come out of this shopping center and go right, and, and you don't realize, or you don't wanna make that U-turn in, in the intersection of the 25 spur, then you have to go all the way down here to Merchant's Way before you can turn somewhere, either U-turn or turn somewhere. And I think for a lot of drivers, they may not be comfortable making those U-turns in that, that kinda environment.
Interesting.
And if, if I'm shopping at Home Depot, I always go out of the exit that's further away from the intersection. But if I'm a Chick-fil-A or SunTrust customer, then, you know, it, it's a different, if, it's a different thought process to go down in front of, you know, in front of Home Depot and come out. I'm, I'm not a fan, I'm not a fan of that right-only, but I am supporting going ahead and acquiring it right-of-way and let's continue to look, look and see if there's, there's, I understand what you're trying to do with, with flow, but people don't like to go down and make U-turns. And my only other comment maybe will be, when you get down in front of Arby's and Captain D's, the limited access that they're gonna have, what kind of input are we getting from, from the owners of Arby's and Captain D's that you're not gonna be able to access, then you're gonna have to go down the U-turn and come back?
That'll definitely be something we have to discuss with them when we go and acquire them.
I mean, you know, we have seen that kill businesses in, in, in our community and others, that when, when the access gets limited, people go somewhere else.
How much is it for the acquisition?
250. We're not quite sure. I mean, what we've estimated at this point is 250,000. Again, as I mentioned, it, the property that we're gonna be acquiring is, it's gonna, you know, it's not gonna be as valuable to the property owner. In my, in my view, I mean, as a roadway designer, we're not impacting the property parking lot. We're not impacting their maneuverability around the property. We're basically using and acquiring a lot of the unused property. Maybe there's some vegetation and trees, things like that, but that's pretty much what we're limiting ourselves to in terms of right-of-way acquisition.
And so if you come out with this right-only from here, this is a, so there's a U-turn permitted at the light, is that what?
I, I believe that's the way we have it. I, I think it's, if you have a.
So, so if you, if you change your mind or whatever, you get caught in this, then you're saying that, okay, to go back this way, you do have an option.
Ain't no changing your mind in this deal. What you're in the deal, you're in the deal.
To U-turn at the light.
But you've got to cross three lanes to get into position to U-turn, right? If you're coming out, if you're coming out of Chick-fil-A, you have to go less from there, and you go up, you turn right and U-turn, you've got to cross three lanes to get into the far-left lane at the traffic light to be able to U-turn and go back. That doesn't seem so.
So I think you're, you're either making a left turn in gridlocked traffic, or it's flowing much more freely, and you go the wrong way for a minute.
There's no way you can.
And, and, and I'll, I'll bring it back. Well, I'm not so sure that we should think of what we're doing here as really fixing.
I don't, I don't think anybody's thinking that, Mike.
It'll fix, but, but, but traffic, traffic flow improvement is, should be the goal.
And I guess our purpose today is right-of-way.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm ready to move forward.
Yeah, right-of-way, yeah, okay. All right, so we're okay on the, moving forward on right-of-way acquisition. We're gonna keep looking at it. We gotta keep working with GDOT about these other things.
So again, the, what we're, what we're asking for today is authorization to move ahead with the, the right-of-way acquisition and to solicit for bids, for solicitation. Once that, once those processes occur and get finalized, the permitting through GDOT, finalizing the plans, acquiring the right-of-way, then we naturally go into solicitation.
This is a squash project.
Yes, sir.
It is a squash project.
Is it within the budget?
Today is the decision to move forward to the next step. Guys, ready?
I got one more question.
What you got?
Do you just paid any complaints from these people over there to SunTrust or Chick-fil-A?
We, we expect complaints. We, we expect them. Yes, yes, sir, we do. Yes, sir.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, we do expect that. That will happen. We do expect. I'm sorry.
You just haven't heard it yet.
No, sir, we haven't. I mean.
It's coming.
Oh, I'm sure.
Well, that's why Ben's got your phone number. When they call him. All right, so, Bob, that was your one question for today. We on board to move forward?
Go forward.
All right.
Okay.
You got it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all. Okay. Item two, receive an update on the animal control facility.
Good afternoon. I guess I inherited the short straw. I get to brief you on the animal control facility. What we need is an azimuth check. Typically in the military, an azimuth check, you tell me which direction you want me to move out in. And that's what I need to know today, what direction the commissioners would like us to staff to move out in. Here's our, I'm trying to get these slides going. I got a ghost slide. So as you know, the budget was 1.5 million dollars. Our current design obligation is 172, wherever that went. Which leaves us with 1,328 million dollars left. For the 172, we have some still left. We got a ready-set design, set of plans to build a new facility, to build, to build a new facility up at the safety complex. When it comes back up, I'll show you the site plan. Ready to go out for bid, ready to go out for bid. Problem is, the estimate for that was 2.5 million dollars. We did some value engineering. Wouldn't really call it value engineering, 'cause we cut one of the kennels off for about a half a million dollars, and we made them structure out of wood and put asphalt shingles on it. We still got it down to about 2 million dollars, okay? We have 1.328 million for the project. So I've. So I've come up with three alternatives, okay? Three directions the board can steer us in, okay? We could put out the design that was done by USR rule and the safety complex and see what it comes in at. Put it out for bid, estimates 2 million dollars. See if it comes in at 2 million dollars, see if it comes in less than 2 million dollars. Option two, about four years ago, the late Chief Doring designed a addition from, with James Kent for a addition to the current facility. That estimated in 2015 dollars was about 1.1 million dollars. 1.1 million dollars. Okay. So, and option three, which was actually brought to my attention on Friday by Ms. Hill, great idea, I thought, was to just take the USR rule building only and put it on the current site. So three options for you. Okay, so. Okay, so we discussed option one. There's option one. Size of the facility, cost of facility. The, the beauty in this option is that the building is designed for disease control. Flow pattern of disease control is the driving force when designing a animal control facility. What the heck does that mean? That means your sick, your, your adoption entrance is in one place, and your animals that I don't know what's wrong with them is in another place. So they don't, and the, and the sick animals don't cross paths with the animals that you know are not sick. Something to that effect. I'm, I'm giving you a broad brush over a small map here. So I'm trying to flip to the next slide now. I feel like I'm on Jeopardy trying to click for the answer here. Except that one smart guy has beat my, you know. Yeah, he could pay for the, he could pay for the shelter now, yeah. He's got 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. All right, so the next slide. Can you, can you pop in the? So the next slide shows just an X through the, the one facility. I discussed this. Of course, you know, I don't have any paper copies with me, 'cause I knew Matt would be squared away, so I wouldn't have to look. Yeah, it makes it a little funner. So the second option was to do the James Kent design, as I said, okay? And then the third option, going back to, was to just take the building that, that USR rule designed and put that on the, the existing facility. And we've got a couple of, of plans where that kinda fits into our site. And I don't really like any of them. I don't think Tiffany likes any of them, but we can work with that. So what we need from, from you all today is a decision on what you would like us to do. Do we do option one and put this out for bid? Do we do option one and put this out for bid? Do we do option two? And I've got pros and cons for each of them. Option two is James Kent design. It's not really something that was designed with, that Tiffany brought into play. And it wasn't a design, I don't think, fully for disease control. So we don't really like the floor plan of that option. Okay? However, we could hire that architect and he could move little boxes around. We could spend some more money designing and we could get up to something. Okay? If that was the case, we'd put two wings on the existing building and leave the existing building there. The office trailer was offset, okay, for that plan. Offset over here so that you would be able to work out of the off, off, trailer while the construction was going on. Okay? So option three is to take, and there's, this is a, this is a 24-acre site that we are currently on. It's, there's jurisdictional wetlands in the, the eastern part, the, the part that along 17. It was successfully evacuated during Hurricane, or Hurricane Matthew. That was one of the reasons, you know, we thought about putting it up on the high ground by the safety complex so we wouldn't have to evacuate the animals. But this previous staff figured out how to evacuate animals and they did that very well the last two storms. So I'm not sure that's as big an issue as, as it, as it, it needs to be. So...
What's the price for option three?
So option three, we haven't got a, it's, it's a 6,000-square-foot building at, you know, 200 dollars a square foot. We're figuring a 1.2 million dollars, somewhere in there. But it's gonna have to be sprinkled. I think they're on a well now. They gotta bring some water in. There's gonna be some utility stuff. We could've done some more work on it, but I kinda needed to know which direction you want me to go on and we can, we can spend more time sharpening the pencil and finding out exactly what needs to be done. But there are some, there may be joint water sewer issue or challenge with option three and the new building.
Dave, is your sewer out there?
I think it's, I think there's a forest main that goes to the north. I'm at a little bit of a deficit because my, my facilities guy's got a bad back. He's out today. They're out this week. So I think there's a forest main.
I don't understand any long time ago, it was a sicky tank.
Yeah. I, I think...
We've discussed about any forest main. It's always been sicky tank.
You probably know more about it than I do, then.
Can, can Tiffany come? Tiffany?
Absolutely.
Tiffany, Tiffany, come up to the mic, please, ma'am.
Have you looked at the, the nursery plan and have you looked at the Kent plan, the nursery plan being a whole new building?
Yes, I have.
And the Kent plan being, taking the existing building and doing whatever?
Yes, I have.
Which one would you prefer?
Well, the challenge, of course, option one would be an ideal way to go. However, if we are not able to build both kennel buildings, then we will significantly cut the capacity of the shelter to a point where it's not really doable. So if we went with option one, we would need to go with the whole option. If we went with option two, which is the Kent building, I can tell you in all honesty, I don't think that that layout is the best use of county resources to accomplish what our goals are at the shelter. It, it's, in some ways, actually would be less efficient and effective for us than even the shelter that we have right now, which has many issues to it.
If, if you, if you take the nursery building...
Yes.
Rather than going out to the safety complex to save money on land and what have you, if, if we, if we put that nursery building, which I believe you're saying is the best in, in your view to have?
The nursery did a very good job at building, or planning a layout that will be very efficient and effective for us.
So, so if we could place it on that property out there, would you be okay with that?
We would be okay with that. Yeah. And of course, there's some other challenges that we need to address with that site, but I know Dave and I are working with that.
But with the drainage, just, just the drainage for the ground itself?
We do have quite a bit of flooding issues. We also have, the, the kennel building that we are currently using is unfortunately having a lot of issues and needs to be, at the very least, resurfaced on the inside, on the walls and the floors. And also, at this point in time, there are some challenges with the way the kenneling is connected to the concrete. The screws are failing, so the dogs are now able to push out the fencing and escape, which is of course a, a significant risk management issue for the county.
With, with the site drainage in particular was an issue. I told Commissioner Coleman, I talked with Dave about it, and Dave thinks we can solve the site drainage out there.
That would be great if we could do that. We also need to look at the plumbing situation with the kennel building because there are some significant issues that have been costing the county money, the way the plumbing is currently set up under the kennel building.
Well, I think what we're, what we have here then is, you know, looking at 2 to 2.5 million dollars, which I know we don't have for option one, and then we have option two and option three. I want to ask the commissioner to weigh in.
Tiffany, what makes you think? Did I understand you say that the new building at the safety complex location, what did I hear you say about that?
Well, of course, if we were able to go with the entire plan, that would be a significant improvement for us. However, in what my understanding is, the, the budget that we would be allotted to build, we would not be able to build the entire facility. Now, there are some members of the community who are willing to fundraise to assist with building that additional building. But if we only build one kennel building and the main building, then that basically cuts our capacity in half. And as you all are aware, at this time, we are always full with the capacity that we have. So cutting it in half is not gonna best serve our community.
So you're talking about just the one, the, the second kennel building?
Yes.
I mean, I don't understand that. That's, that's something that can be done. We can add on. We didn't build another building.
But the, what my understanding is, that doesn't fall, to build the entire plan, we're looking at, I think, 2 million to 2.5 million dollars.
Okay, I mean, I understand that. So, but, but you're saying 2 million to 2.5, eliminating the, this one kennel?
My understanding is 2 million to 2.5 if we build the entire plan, but it hasn't been...
So right here, right here on this slide, okay? If we, if we eliminate this kennel, okay, we think we're gonna save 500,000 dollars, which means this new building and this set of kennels here, okay, 2 million dollars. 2 million dollars.
All right, what's the head count for the kennels versus what we got now?
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. I think you had 80-something, so it's half. I mean, it's virtually half of them.
And the challenge, if I may...
How many we got now?
Right now, we have 87 kennels. Some of them are doubles. And we're, you know, and depending on size of dogs, we do some creative housing out there. The challenge in only having the one building is, again, if we're looking at if we have a parvo outbreak, which we have parvo at the shelter today, if we have ringworm, then we have to be able to have the ability to quarantine. And there are fewer double kennels in the building than we, in, in the building as proposed than what we currently have. So I, you know, like I said, if building, building on higher ground and not having to evacuate and having a nice, fresh, new facility, if I had the money to spend, but I don't have the money to spend. So, you know, that's, that's for your wisdom to choose what direction to go.
So I mean, okay, we go here, eliminate that building. Capacity-wise, we're about the same as we are now.
No, because there aren't, we're less because there are not as many double kennels figured into there. When you have double kennels, you can double and triple up on smaller-sized dogs. Unfortunately, that one building there doesn't give us that ability to do that.
Dave, if, if we're considering putting a new building at the existing location, and, and we're gonna have half the number of kennels in the new building that we have, are we gonna just shut down the existing kennel?
The number of kennels, okay, the number of kennels up here is practically the same. Okay? I think one has 90 and one has 87. They're basically the same, old site, new site. Same number. You cut, if you get rid of half of them, okay, then you got rid of half of 90. You got 45 over here. Okay? So now your old site has 87 or so, and you, if you want to build this new site with half of it, you only got 45. So the, the number of kennels is basically the same. And the new plan, both plans, same number kennels.
But if, if we go with option three...
Option three.
And build at the existing site...
Right.
How much building are we gonna build out there?
We're gonna build the 6,000-square-foot building right down here in the circle. Right there. Right there. We're gonna, we're basically gonna build the admin building. That's it. We're not, we're not touching the kennels. So the, the problems that she stated with the kennels, we're still gonna have those problems with the kennels unless we get some money to fix those problems.
Well, so wait, wait. So we're saying that that 6,000-square-foot building's gonna cost our 1.3 that we have available?
Yes, sir. Well, we don't have an S, I don't have a, I, I mean, this right here is, I, I started this Friday afternoon, so I'm not sure, you know, I didn't get a, a write-back estimate from the designer. But at 200, 200, 200 dollars a foot, you know, it's right in there, the 1 million, a little more than 1 million, plus we have some utility challenges and some other things, roads and that kind of stuff. And then it, then it, then you gotta figure out where you're gonna build it on the site and what your infrastructure is gonna be going into the building and out of the building.
In plus, we haven't increased the, the treatment and care for the animals. We've just got a building to, they're not in the 6,000 feet, right?
Well, they come, they come in this building and they're treated in this building in certain aspects. I think your cat room is in this building, right? So, so that part's taken care of. It's the dogs that are in the kennels back here, they're gonna be the same.
Actually, if I can, in looking at this building, there are several additional spaces for us that we do not have in our current facility. If you'll notice on the left-hand side, those are intake...
Red.
Oh, thank you. The red thing, okay. Animal person, don't know how to use technology. If you look at these kennels right here, what we've got going on here are better police drop-off kennels for the officers when they come in overnight and drop off dogs. They're going to be safer and easier to clean than what we have now. These kennels here are actually, can be used for isolation of new dogs coming in who need to be isolated for some reason. We've got our full medical facilities, which, as you know, we now have surgery going on two days a week out at the shelter, and we're offering free spay, neuter, and other services to the community. We have both isolation and quarantine for cats as well as cat living space. At this current time, we have one room for both sick cats and new cats who come in and know where to isolate if there are any issues. For example, right now, we have an upper respiratory outbreak in that room, and we have a lot of adult nursing mother cats in there with her newborn kittens, and we do not have anywhere to locate them away from the other cats who have come in with the highly contagious disease. And we have been reaching out to the community to try and to find fosters for those cats and have not been successful in doing that. So what this does for us is actually, it provides us with a lot of options to use best practices in animal sheltering, also to be fully and compliant with Georgia Department of Agriculture and Georgia Veterinary Medical Association in going with this design.
Can we, what, what we're trying to figure out how to do is spend the money that we allotted for this thing.
Right.
Okay? You know, get all we can. My question is, can we use the existing kennels if we get the building per put in now? And then come back and find funding and do the, do the new kennels at another time? Can, can we make that work?
We can make it work.
Because I, I mean, we have got to find a way to, to chart out a path forward where we can do everything everybody wants.
Right.
Though we don't have all the money right now.
Right.
But I think it would be, Commissioner Coleman, I mean...
Well, I mean, bottom line, this is a squash project.
Yes, squash project.
And we presented it to the taxpayers, and the taxpayers voted for building up. And that's the bottom line. Now, it's nobody's shit. We have one obligation here, gentlemen. We got a, we got a project here that's governed by the state laws that says we collected the money, build a new building and a new facility, and that's the end of, that's the end of the summer. These options that y'all are coming up with, all this broke-down building we got out there, we spent, Dave, how much money we spent moving that building out there, putting it back together and having the facility we got now?
Not 160,000.
Huh?
Not 160,000. Well, I tell you what, they'd be in a pitch if they didn't have it right now.
You're building on a swamp, okay? Of those of you who have not been out there and walked the grounds, you have a swamp out there. It's not gonna get any better. That's why I asked you about the plumbing a while ago. There ain't no plumbing. It's a big giant hole in the ground. And, and any, and you asked the volunteers that we've run the majority of them off because of the situation. Ask, ask the people that are innocent bystanders, go ahead and give their time to help make this thing work, and then you turn around and wanna cut everybody short. Come on, folks.
We, we, we ain't wanna cut nobody short.
We spent 500,000 dollars to do a lot more, less effective things than this.
The new building, I have proper plumbing in it.
Huh?
The new building will have proper plumbing in it.
Yeah, but I mean, how much? Just Dave hadn't give you a number on that yet. You just gotta keep telling them, they don't know what they're gonna run into when they start digging.
Well, we know that the new building, if we put this new building, okay, on the existing site, the new building on the existing site, it's gonna have to be sprinkled. And if it requires sprinkler, you see, it can't come off a well. So it's gonna have to have water coming into the site from joint water and sewer. If we bring joint water and sewer water into this building, you might as well bring it into the, bring it into the, the whole facility, and if you're bringing in water, you're probably gonna bring in sewage. So I...
You already got that out of the complex. You already got water sewered complex.
We have some challenges out there, too. As you know, it's, it's undersized and that needs to be fixed.
But I mean...
Does the sewage, the sewage, the lift station there needs to be fixed in the neighborhood of 300,000 or something?
But that's the water sewer's problem.
No, it's not. No, sir.
We have to pay that.
For our lift station?
Yes, sir. We, we, we're in discussions with joint water and sewer as to how much we're paying and how much they're paying.
But I mean, the fact is, infrastructure's in the ground. Whereas what you're talking about right here, you're gonna have to come back...
Well, that's not, that's not capacity. You got infrastructure in the ground, but you don't have the capacity in that infrastructure to add all this to it.
St. Simon's didn't need it, so we fix that.
No, no, you ain't fix that.
Well, we worked on it.
Private, private people have paid to upgrade the capacity in the current infrastructure. That's how they doing it. It's just like we'd have to pay.
Zero.
So you can spend the 300,000 here.
We're gonna clear it ourselves, so it's, land's a wash.
Well, the bottom line I'm trying to get to right here is, we are giving up with options on the squash project that there ain't no option.
Or did we just...
Taxpayers voting for this, it's cut and dried, and we need more money than we need this one.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Go ahead, sir. Wait, wait, we got questions, sir. You're, you're in charge, you got commissioners asking questions.
Well, I have a question, under the SPOSS ruling here, are all three of these options, uh, available to us? Or is there any option that would be available based on what was put on SPOSS?
I think all options are available.
All options are available?
The SPOSS resolution says animal control facility.
What, said what?
Animal control facility.
Animal, what, what is prior to that?
The, the SPOSS resolution that the board passed in twenty sixteen says animal control facility.
That's all?
That's all.
Don't say build, do nothing. But I mean, that's, understand, regardless of what that says, that's not the way it was presented to the voters.
Exactly right.
Because the voters were voting to put a new facility, we already had it, told them where we were gonna put it, how we were gonna do with it, and, and we're gonna do the one point five million, and... Guys, this is, this is not right.
How did they estimate?
This is not right.
Larger.
Why you gonna go out there and patch up the building that's falling apart? We spent a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on it.
The question is, how was the original one point five million dollar estimate? Good question.
How did we arrive at?
Commissioner Booker is... As you might recall, um, I mean, most of the commissioners here were at those meetings when this, uh, project was discussed. And there were a lot of questions asked, are you sure one point five million dollars is enough money? Because it didn't seem logical at the time that it was enough money. There was conversations between county staff, uh, and an architect, uh, about the project costs. And architect provided information that one point five million dollars was the right number. And so, I remember specifically because there were questions by the board, there were questions that I asked, and that's the number that we were, uh, sure was the correct number. Unfortunately, uh, somehow not all of the, um, parts of the bill, I don't know if it was the kennels or what, but there was an obvious miscommunication, and we weren't provided the full scope of the project by the architect.
There's a different architect than this?
It, it actually is the same one, uh, but they, they had that conversation before we went through the bid process. But, uh, I mean, it's just, that's, that's what happened.
Alan, was that math also not applied to the veterans' park?
Uh, I can't speak to that. I, I think...
Well, I mean, we're in the same boat with the veterans' park.
Well, uh, yes, but the veterans' park was more conceptual at the time. And I think the one point five million dollars for the, for the veterans' park was a good number based on the concept. But anyway, I think there was a miscommunication, uh, between county staff and architect, and that's how the, the one point five million dollars is arrived at. But, as you might recall, there were several SPOSS discussion meetings. And after each one, you ask county staff to go back and reaffirm that price. And after every one, they came back and reaffirmed the same price, uh, the one point five million dollars. And, and that's why I believe that if you can, it's good, um, to have a SPOSS and that's, you know, no next item on your agendas to discuss the potential for a future SPOSS. You know, I think in some cases, it makes sense on one SPOSS to do the design and engineering and construction estimate so you absolutely know what a good construction estimate is gonna be before you come back, um, you know, with, with the construction of, of the building or roads or whatever the case may be. Because, I mean, and that estimate also was, was provided four years ago. And so, there's been a lot of, I mean, the economy's good in Glen County and contractors are very busy. And so, they're, you know, their bids for a project like this are higher than what they were four years ago. So, we have that weighing in on this particular project as well, as, as it is on all the SPOSS projects. The estimates we came up with at the time, um, there's been a lot of inflationary growth since then.
Now, in your resume, I say that you've had, uh, experience with constructing in, in your past, uh, positions that you had, especially experienced in this and in an animal shelter. Somewhere along your line in your background?
I have, when I was in Lee County, uh, animal shelter was constructed. It was, it was on budget, under budget.
You've done this before?
I have been involved with, uh, many building projects, including, um, multimillion dollar jail facilities. One here in Glen County that came within budget and other counties as well. But unfortunately, the estimate for the animal control facility just was, uh, was not a good estimate. But, I mean, we can't go back now. I mean, we all wish we could go back and come up with the right number, but we can't. The fact of the matter is, is that, you know, unless the board chooses to provide additional funds to the project, we have to live within the funds that we have. And so, the, the options that were presented to you today, two options, I think, uh, we can live within the funds that we have. That's either option two or option three.
How many bids did we have on, on the animal control?
One.
One. So, that not be part of the problem? Can, can we, can we put it back out for bid?
To design it again?
No.
No, we haven't, we, we haven't, uh, we haven't put it out for bid yet. For construction, all we did was put it out for design.
Just an estimate.
Yeah. We just have a, we just have an architect's estimate. Right, architect's estimate. So, that, I mean, that was option one, you put it out for bid, see how much it really costs.
Things like that would be illogical.
That's, that's an option for you.
What's the downside to that?
Well, if it comes in at two, uh, it comes in at two point five, two point four, whatever it comes, I don't, you tell me what, what you want, put up for it. If it comes in, uh, we don't award it if we don't have the money. I'm not sure...
But we don't have to award it if we don't have the money. But we, but at least we would know what it cost.
Well, yes, but I, yeah, the other term is, I'm not sure how many folks are gonna bid on it if they don't think you guys are gonna fund it. I'm just throwing that out there. I, if, if I'm a contractor, I'm not gonna spend much time unless you're gonna come up with money.
So, the architect, the same architect gave us the underbid through whatever miscommunication. Also, came back with the current information.
He came up with it. I started involvement in this process during the, uh, when they were selecting the architect, okay? I was at the, uh, the pre-bid for the selection of the architect, okay? The only scope increase that I understood at that point was at that meeting, they decided they wanted to air condition all the kennels. Hadn't heard about that before, okay? That particular architect did not bid on the project because he thought it was worth more than one point five million dollars. And so, he said, this is at least a two and, two and a half million dollar structure, I'm not bidding on. So, he did not bid on it. This, these folks did bid on it. I can tell you that these folks did a very, I mean, they did their due diligence. They worked with, they worked with Stephanie, they did multiple trips to, to neighboring facilities, they collected data. I think they did, I think they gave us a good design. Of course, Tiffany would have to be the, the, uh...
But we, we paid for that design.
We've paid for that design, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, the question is whether do you wanna use part of that design or use some of that design now and use some of the design later? I mean, it doesn't mean that if we go to option three, you put this building on the existing somewhere, then you build these things later. I mean, there's, there's multiple options on the table. The, uh, the, the ground is twenty-four acres, okay? It, uh, my understanding is it hasn't flooded in the hurricanes. I don't know if it did or not, nobody told me it did. Because it floods in the building. Nobody's told me it flooded in the building.
It doesn't flood in the building, but after a heavy rain, there is nowhere...
The ground is very soft, it's like being in Holland, I understand. I understand, I understand.
The main building has flooded in heavy rains, but the kennels have not.
Okay, well, uh, so, there is, I mean, there is, I mean, if you look at, if you look at that site and you look at the site next to it that has the Humane Society, they have a pond in the back. Maybe there's a reason they have a pond in the back. Maybe they've, they, maybe they built a stormwater pond to hold some of the overflow. There's no, there's no drainage back there other than sheet flow to this facility. So, the twenty-four acres, sheet flows to the facility and then goes north. So, there, there, there are options that we could, you know, do some, do some civil work out there and cut some trees down and make some ditches and that kind of stuff and try to dry the, dry the area up. That hasn't been tried, we could try that. No, it wouldn't, because that's all upland. The, uh, I'll show you right here. Good question, okay? So, this area hatched right here is the Corps of Engineers, uh, jurisdictional wetland area. See, it goes right here. And then there's a fifty foot buffer along that area, okay? Then we're kinda wedged in right there in the fifty foot buffer, okay? So, so this is up, this is relatively upland area here, okay? And then there's some wetlands here, and then it goes out this way. So, I mean, it would require some more study and some more work, but, you know, there could be an engineering solution. I'm not gonna tell you this is a better site, I agree, the safety building is a better site. Guaranteed, but I mean, I, it all depends on, you know, and then, and then these, these areas, these things right here, Tiffany and I have already started. I know it's not flipping. Okay, so Tiffany and I have started, uh, talked about these layouts, okay? This layout, it goes through the jurisdictional area and would require a GDOT permit, uh, to get back onto seventeen, so it's not a good solution, I don't think. This, this, uh, solution right here where the parking lot intersects her, her two buildings is not a good solution. We would probably flip that, put the building on this side and put the, uh, parking lot on that side. But from an architect point of view, and architects always like to come in the main entrance and see the building, the best solution would probably be to raise this, you know, demolish the existing building and put that building over top of it. And then increase your parking or whatever you need to do, so. I mean, there's, there's options. You give us some direction or which way you want us to head out and maybe just narrowing our focus to option one and two or three and four or whatever you want to option that we can, we can, we can move in a certain direction.
But, but the bottom line is, we've got one point three million dollars.
One point three two eight. Yes, for construction and design. I mean, if I, if I hire the designer to do some more work here on site design, you know, then cha-ching, that comes off the top.
Dave, is it, uh, two statements that in the very near future, they're going four lane highway seventeen?
True.
Okay, what's, how would that affect our property there, our entranceway and all that?
Just, uh, we're ready for it, uh, they made us remove our sign back.
So, I mean, it's far, but I mean...
Animal control sign, you can't see. Right, so, they made it move us back off the right of way, it used to be here. We cleared some vegetation here. Tiffany and I started about, talking about how much, if we can clear some more vegetation. Or Tiffany also, and I, excuse me, we also talked about maybe putting, uh, talking with GDOT and putting signs out here that say animal control facility. If you get them approved by GDOT, maybe you can get a sign out there on the highway that says it's coming up. I don't know why we couldn't do that.
Tiffany, have you ever been involved in a design and construction of an animal shelter?
Yes, I have.
Where?
In Santa Barbara.
And, I mean, was it from start to finish?
How much was it from start to finish? That was twenty years ago.
Was it from start to finish?
Oh, was it from start to finish? Yes, it was.
But, I mean, once again, uh, the construction, the bottom line here, the dollar number, uh, is it safe to say we, we, we're still speculating on that? We don't have a hard number, nobody's told us.
You're always gonna have, well, until somebody bids on it, gives you a hard number, you're gonna have an estimate. But I don't have, I don't...
Any reason why we shouldn't do that. We gotta get a hard number. Well, we, if, if, we don't know who's out there, who's gonna do what, if we got a hard number and if indeed, uh, there, there may be some grants available, there may be some private funding out there somewhere, but if we can get a hard number, we're not gonna have anything.
I, I agree with you, we gotta have a hard number, but, but we can't start a building with one point three million dollars and hope that another seven hundred or another, another million. I mean, we can't build a building and then stop before we put a roof on, so...
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, I agree with that too.
So, we, we've got to know that we've got funding. We've got one point three that, that we're sitting here with, that's, that our SPOSS says we've got to build an animal control. So, so, I mean, unless somebody's gonna give us a grant tomorrow for another million dollars, I don't, I don't know how we get out of this gridlock we're in. If we bid the building, if we bid the building that says we're either gonna put it at the existing site or we're gonna put it at the public complex, but we're gonna build a building, couldn't we get bids on that?
I don't know if we've done that, but I, I guess we could come up with some...
We can divide the bid into the six thousand square foot building plus one kennel plus the second kennel and, and receive three bids. So, at least we know the number that we're talking about.
At which, at which, at which location?
Irregardless of the location, I mean, we would know that site work would be more at the existing, um, location than it would be at the public complex because we gotta solve drainage. But, but the building itself could be bid in three parcels. The six thousand plus, plus the kennel, plus the kennel. And then we, and then we would know, we would know the hard numbers we're looking at to help us decide where we're gonna be forced to put the building.
But I would have to do some, I would have to do some design in here to find out what the infrastructure component's gonna be of that bid.
Couldn't we, couldn't we do it exclusive of site work? The building, the, the hard cost of the building.
Well, then, how do they hook it? How are they hooking it up to water and sewer? How are the roads?
We know where it's coming out. Site work, site work can be a separate bid.
Well, I mean, I've gotta design some fix here. If, if we're putting this building on this site, it's gotta be sprinklered. And if it's gotta be sprinklered, I gotta have water, so...
It doesn't have to be sprinkled at the public complex?
It's gonna get sprinkled there too, there's water there, yes, sir.
So, same specs. We're gonna have to do it whether we put it here or...
Okay, well, then when you award the building, how do I come up with the money to pay for the infrastructure to the building?
The, the site work could be a separate bid.
Okay, but, but I have to, somebody has to sit down there and design that site work.
Right.
Okay, so that, I've gotta, I've gotta spend time designing, I've gotta, I've gotta spend time, one, designing the site work and then, two, deciding where that building's gonna be. Okay, because, you know, you, you know, there might have to be borings to find out what the soil condition is underneath the building, that kind of stuff. I gotta tell whoever's bidding on that building there, I gotta tell them where it's gonna be and what he's hooking up to. I can't just tell them, build a building out there.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
I've been doing this a long time.
Yes, sir.
But you can get hard cost on building cost, site work separate. And we will know what the building costs, not, not the total project, what the buildings cost. And we can know the six thousand foot, we can know kennel one, and we can know kennel two. To put a scope of work together then that says, here's a better option. We could go to the public complex or we can go to the existing site.
Let me ask Commissioner Neal a question. If we know that the, uh, we have a pretty, first off, do we have a pretty good idea what the building itself will cost?
Once again, I, I started this Friday afternoon. I asked Joe about it.
Well, let me, uh...
I asked Joe about it, uh, this morning, uh, you know. Yeah, he, I'm sure the architect had given me a cost of that building. Uh, you know, it's a few more questions, what he thinks it'll cost.
Well, I think, I think we need to get that and also for the kennel, we, we don't need to go bid it. We, we, we don't need to put people, this in business to make a dollar. Bidding stuff, we got no way of knowing if, if, if we even be willing to find the overage, okay? And I say the overage, uh, I believe what we know so far, this building with these kennels is busting our budget.
The board, the, well, the board has gone, had to decide if they want to, how they going to find the money, whether it's 300,000 over? Whether it's 300,000, 200,000, a million over? Are you going to be willing to go find the money outside of what's in SPOS to fund this? Wouldn't we ever?
But, but Chairman, it, it is an entirely different question if we think we've got to go find 300,000 or if we've got to go find 3 million.
Well, he can get, I understand. He can get pretty good numbers from the architect who designed this thing in today's dollars. Just what you're asking, can you do that? And then we'll have a line item down there for, uh, utilities to the building.
I think we wasting time to, to, to do that. If, if, I mean, uh, this is a bona fide architect, uh, and our staff, they, they've been doing this stuff. Uh, we are a million dollars short. That's what the issue is. Now, we got a design that everybody seems to like. Um, we got a, we got a site that everybody seems to like. That, that is, that is the problem. Where is this money going to come from? And, uh, and, and we just have to make that decision. I don't think, I think doing other stuff is going to waste time and we're going to end up right back at a shortfall of a million, of a million plus dollars. And so, uh, we need to make a decision about that.
Tiffany, based on your tenure here so far?
Yes.
Do you anticipate the, um, animal control facility adequate based on what you've seen so far as far as growth code, population increase? For how many families? You've got 10 families moving to Glen County. How many of them going to have an animal? I think expansion here of building a smaller than what we've got, I don't, I, that doesn't make sense. I mean, we've got a plan for the future here and if we're going to do this, not, I don't have any question about not doing it right.
If you, if you want my honest assessment, the, the Humane Society four years ago did an assessment and found that, um, pet ownership is oversaturated in Glen County. So, um, what we're dealing with, the pet overpopulation problem that we have here in Glen County is because there needs to be more aggressive spay neuter and more aggressive education of the public. Um, and that is my honest opinion. Um, I do not want us to cut the capacity, absolutely. Um, the site that we're on has challenges, but, you know, that's not my expertise area to address that. Um, I just know right now, we do feel like we're holding the current facility together with bubble gum and duct tape, so we need some help.
Gentlemen, what's the question? Where are you going to get the money? I mean, I understand. Talking about a million dollars, we're sitting here and talking about 20, 30 million dollars.
You think that, if we, if, if, if we scheduled this a little later, closer to 2020, um, could we just add the other money? Or could we advance it and reimburse ourselves? You know, I, I mean, out of 2020's SPOS?
I think you can do the, the former. I think you can add a 2020's SPOS out of there. I have to think a little bit more about the second question. Uh, if you issued bonds for that, you could have SPOS reimburse the bonds. As far as just doing the project and then have it reimbursed in advance of the SPOS referendum, I don't think that would work without any kind of bond issuance, but you could add a, a line item under 2020 for that.
But, but if we started writing, you know, to, to issue bonds, it'd take the 2020 to, to, to get them issued, right?
Well, I think you could probably, and I, I'd want to look at that a little further or, I think you could probably, you could issue bonds and then have... Let me, let me think about that more before I answer that on the record, but that, that, that may be an option. The, the first one is definitely an option. You can definitely add a line item on there.
So, so the question is boiling down to not, if we do it, are we willing to find another million dollars or a million and a half to put with it? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, to me, it seems like that's where, where we need to go with, because this, the, the existing site, it seems like it has so many problems with the flooding and things. And then, we are a growing community. So, um, I mean, if we have some other options, if we need to push it closer or do something with, to partner up with 2020 or find the money some other way, I'm, I'm willing to support that. But, um, but that, the money is the problem. I think we got a, the design and we got a site. So, so we don't need to spend any more time on that. We just need to figure out about the money. So, so Aaron figured it out.
All right. So, Aaron, you're going to figure it out.
Look, I'll, I'll report on the board on, on those options as far as SPOS 2020 goes.
All right. Let us, let us know what the options are in terms of, uh, I, I can't believe anybody that's taken, want to build anything less than what we know we need and, and, uh...
Yeah, and not by that flooding.
Trying to find that money is, uh, and, and, and not just finding money, but finding it the right way to do it. So, so, do you search and get back to us? And Tiffany, I appreciate you.
Dave, will that, will that mean he's going to work on that?
Yeah.
And then come back to us with a, I hope, a good solution? And then, would we turn around and consider putting it out for bid?
I think it would be fairly close to going out for bid, if I'm hearing everything. Dave, wouldn't it be, uh... All right, Dave, listen, we've got 1.3 something million and it's going to take 2.3 something million and board has figured out a way to come up with extra money. Is this thing ready to go out for bid?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it's been ready for a year.
Okay. All right.
Good.
Okay. I mean, it was all about, it's all about, you know, dealing with the handsets SPOS puts on us and we come up with a kennel.
Nah, that, that, uh, that estimate, I'm going to ask that estimate as well. That messed everybody up.
Okay.
Okay.
We, we're done. I think we're done. Uh, I'm going to call a five-minute break before we go to the last item and everybody can go to the restroom.
That one thing, I got 10 years in my schedule, so forgive me if I get carried away.
Who's doing the SPOS 2020 presentation?
There is not a presentation, there's a discussion.
Oh, me? Okay, um, that's right. Well, we need, really need Mr. Booker here.
He went upstairs for a minute, he'll be back.
Okay, well, if you all get out your class, head out today, get ready, SPOS 2020.
He went upstairs.
These commissioners. Sidewalk out there on Chapel, is it Chapel, Chapel Cross? Trying to lift it. He said, oh, I wonder how much that sidewalk to nowhere costs? If they don't. We've got many people who will be down there. And then they're so, they don't take their life in their own hands, try riding a bicycle on that road. It's busy.
I was coming into town yesterday afternoon, and there was a old sidewalk, big adult tricycle. Coming around, more extension, man, paid traffic money. Around the world, kept me on.
He was on a long road today, had the bicycle path, and he was looking, racing by, he was just a regular casual. A little long trip.
Why would you fight that, if it was right?
Let's go. On the other side. Can we call it? Pedaling, tricycle.
Nah, he, he said he was coming.
Here it comes.
Commissioners travel back and forth to Washington.
There he is.
She's like a.
I don't know, they took my point.
That's it, thirty minutes.
There he is! Okay, uh, commissioners, we're going to, uh, we are going to consider a, what we're, I guess what we're going to call SPOS 2020. And today is the first formal discussion we're having about the next SPOS that, uh, we would potentially take before the voters. And to lay the groundwork for that, I'm going to ask Aaron to lay out to us, I think, uh, most of us have heard this before, but we have two commissioners, and you need to hear it. Before we think about, talk about projects and priority on projects, uh, we need to understand some timelines and how this thing works, so Aaron, if you'll, uh, you know, to get it before the voters, to, to, to get a list of projects before the voters, to vote up and vote down, uh, there's some timelines here that, that we'll have to deal with, so, uh, Aaron, if you'll, uh...
Certainly, take your time. Uh, commissioners, so, SPOS 2016, the one we have right now, it will expire, uh, on its own, um, on September thirtieth of, um, September thirtieth, uh, of, of 2020, it was a fourteen calendar order, three and a half years lost. Uh, so September thirtieth, 2020, or when the, uh, the last dollars collected, uh, or end of that quarter, which right now looks like it may coincide of each other, so we're looking at, you know, uh, that quarter ending September thirtieth, 2020. Um, if, depending on if you want a seamless transition, or if there's a gap in collections, uh, will depend on what election date referendum that you choose, uh, to go on. Uh, in 2020, you've got, you have three SPOS referendum dates that are at your disposal. Uh, this was something we talked about, uh, the, the retreat on St. Simon's, uh, but I will real briefly go over those dates again. Those three days that are allowed by state law, um, are the presidential preference primary, uh, which we anticipate to be March third of 2020. You also have the general primary, um, May nineteenth of 2020, and you have the general election in November, on November third, 2020. Generally, my recommendation as far as when you start that process, or the kickoff date, um, that starts with Senator noting to the city of Brunswick. That's, that's kind of what I call day one. Um, my recommendation would be to start that sooner than later. But, uh, I, I would say around the six month mark, that is not a drop dead date, though. Um, I've kind of calculated some drop dead dates that leave no, leaves no room for error whatsoever. Um, and that's our, depending on what dates you choose, I can give you the drop dead dates. But roughly, it's a little, uh, hundred thirty days in advance, is the, is an absolute prop date of the date. But, uh, three, uh, three months plus to six months, uh, the six month mark is generally the recommended, uh, start date. But it starts with county sending notice to the, uh, the city saying, we've selected this referendum date. And I think that's step one for this county commission, is just figure out what date you want to, um, uh, you want to aim for, one of those three dates in three, twenty twenty. Um, if you have it in one of the first two dates, either the March, uh, twenty twenty, or the May, twenty twenty, you should be able to have a seamless transition to start, um, the 2020 SPOS collections when 2016 ends. If you choose the, uh, November third election, you will have a gap in, in collections, which means, uh, your, your vendors, your retailers will have a stopping point, and then they'll start back up in April first of 2021. Um, and there, there's nothing wrong with that, that's just something they got to be aware of as you choose those dates. Uh, but generally, uh, once you, once you set a, a, a date, uh, you'll send notice to the mayor and the city commission just saying, formally inviting them to sit down and discuss the SPOS. Uh, that's, that's, you only have to have one of those meetings, uh, or you can certainly have more. I think typically, there's, there's two or three meetings that you have with the city, and you start to refine your list. You, you have a, uh, a target, uh, collection amount, and that'll, that'll dictate, um, what the, that project look, looks like. As, as far as, uh, how long this SPOS can be, I know that's another point of, uh, conversation topic is, uh, depending if you have an IGA or intergovernmental agreement with the city, um, there's different, uh, pluses and minuses with that, uh, depending on, uh, what, what you want. But if you do have an IGA agreement with the city, you can go up to six years. If you don't have an IGA, uh, and you have a level one project, that can, will dictate if it's five or six years. Uh, if you have no IGA, you have no level one countywide project, that is up to five years or whenever your estimate is collected, whichever occurs first. That's what we're doing right now. We have that, uh, up to three and a half years, uh, or the estimate, uh, when we collect all our revenue, whichever occurs first. If the revenues are, are on point, it should happen around the same period of time. But, uh, that's another, I have this kind of point of discussion that you'll want to have, is do you want an IGA? How long do you want it to be? What, you know, how much revenue do you, you think you're gonna, you're gonna receive? And then, uh, depending if you have an IGA or not, the city will get a population split, or as negotiated per your, your intergovernmental agreement with the city. Once you have those things formulated, uh, you'll adopt this SPOS resolution, that'll set forth the projects, uh, of the county and the city. It can also include, uh, if you want trickle projects, uh, water sewer projects. You create that list, you adopt your resolution, you forward that to board of elections, they call the election. There's some, uh, publication dates, uh, requirements, and then they'll set, uh, that on timeline, they send it up to the state to build the ballot. Uh, once that's done, they'll, they'll publish it, uh, four weeks in a row preceding the election, and the election's held. Uh, again, a hundred thirty days is your bare minimum, uh, and the further you stretch that out beyond a hundred thirty days, the better, as far as it, the timing, allows room for discussion, allows room for, uh, you know, a day or two to kind of get these things done. And that's kind of, that's a, a brief overview of, of the process. I haven't answered any questions about any of those things, or if there's any additional questions about options and, and dates and then processes.
Have we ever had a six year?
I'd have to go back through my, my notes, um, I want to say, I think we have, I think maybe SPOS, oh, two, two or three? The last time we had an IGA was SPOS four, so maybe it's SPOS four, when we had a six year SPOS. Uh, but I'd have to go through my, my, my notes here, and I could probably find that pretty quick, but I think we have.
Is there any pros and cons about that?
Uh, well, you, you get six years of collections, uh, so you don't, you're not going back to the voters as quickly if you have a six year SPOS. So you're not having to do this process, uh, you know, until another six year is passed. And it's, it's, um, and you can go up to six years, it doesn't have to be six years, but you can go up, you can max that out in six years. There's probably some flexibility in terms of the project list, uh, some of the timing of those things that, that you can get into with an IGA. Uh, but I think the primary benefit of having, uh, a six year, well, an, an IGA with the city is that you can go up to the six year part.
The, the, uh, to me, it seems like we need to decide if we want to, if we want a gap or not. And then that would kind of dictate the starting date.
Yeah, I think that's, uh, I think that's a good start, fully, uh, decide if we want to, uh, take this or vote, so we can have continuous collection, or have a breaking collection by the merchants, and, uh, which would be the November election, so, uh, the, uh, you know, the current SPOS, I was for the 2016, when we went in it, I was for waiting for the general election because I felt like it should just be done when we, when most voters turn out, but this, this coming year, it's, it's gonna be a lot of, I think any election would be a good election to have it on. You've got presidential primaries starting, you know, there's gonna be huge turnouts all the way around, so I think you can have the turnout. The, uh, in fairness to the people that collect the tags, if there's a break, if you go to next November and vote on it, and it's successful, then there will be a break. And they've got to reset however they figure and calculate and collect the tax, and, 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 you know, when 2016 ends, and then twenty seven, when 2020 SPOS picks up. I mean, if we're going to do it, we're going to do it the way I see it, I'm, I'm good for either the presidential preference or the March third. Presidential preference or March third?
Well, well, well.
May nineteenth or the March third?
Well, I say the, I'm sorry, the presidential preference for March third of the, uh, primary on May nineteenth.
There's really no advantage to, that I see of having a, um, a break.
I don't see it.
I'd rather see it, I'd rather see it be seamless.
No, that's a disadvantage, I, I've been there, it's a mess when you're merchant trying to get all that history calculated.
So, are we, are we to the point of, of deciding then it, it's gonna be March third or May nineteenth?
Yeah, I think so.
I, I would, you know, give my two cents, it, it, May nineteenth.
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, I got May nineteenth.
May nineteenth, Bill?
May nineteenth.
Eric, May nineteenth. So, if we're going to do that, when, when do you send a notice out to the city?
It's now in, uh, May, almost May, um, just whenever y'all want to, we don't have to do that until probably November. But we can certainly, we could do that.
Anytime.
Sooner rather than later, wouldn't you think?
There's no, there's no, um, outside date, we can send it too early, really. So you could send it in, in May, June, uh, July this year, whenever y'all were ready. You'd be far ahead of the curve, and that's a good thing, uh, to get out, that allows you more time, flexibility to, to talk about uh, all these factors and variables that go into it. So if y'all tell me what, what you think you might want to, um, what I would suggest is, is having that placed on the board's agenda for a full vote, just saying, authorize, or, uh, pick the May nineteen, twenty twenty election referendum date, and authorize a letter be sent to, uh, the mayor and the city commission, and inviting them to a, a date specific meeting, and to have a meeting in mind where you invite them. And that, again, the, that, that time flexibility, has, gets some flexibility to them, make sure they're, uh, available, make sure we can, um, you know, communicate with them on that. So if y'all tell me you want to see it on the May agenda, or one of May agendas, or June or July, I'll make sure we get that for you.
I suggest the first meeting in June, what about that?
To have the, it approved.
Yeah, that'll work. And if there's a, you know, a certain date, and that meeting in June, you want to, uh, I guess if you think about it, a date, you want to meet with the city, like I said, one of these work sessions on, on Tuesdays in here. Uh, you want to do it another different date, outside of a work session, we'll have, um, you know, some options on that, or, once we, we need some guidance from y'all.
Well, why don't, why don't we do it, I think, the way we usually do, that, uh, Allen worked with the city and see when, you know, find some times that work for them, and then.
Set up a joint.
And then throw them, throw some emails at us, see what we can all come together on.
Sure.
Just for curiosity's sake, what are, what, what are the monthly collections running now on this current SPOS?
Well, the, the best thing I can say is annually, it's about twenty million. So, I, I think by June, July of 2020, we'll collect the full amount, if, if things stay on course. But some months, uh, you know, based on tourism, the collections are a little bit less. So, you know, I mean, it, it runs between one point five, one point six a month, and the slower times of year to two point one, two point two. I think, you know, one of the things we, we have to keep in mind is that, based on what I hear from, what I read from the economists, is that the bull is gonna go away and the bear's gonna come for a little while, and so we need to be mindful of that. So, I, I think for right now, if, if the board is considering a five year SPOS, I think twenty million is probably a good number for discussion purposes right now, I think, you know, as, as the year goes on, if you look at it.
A hundred million in five years.
Right, I think so, uh, and that's with the consideration that a downturn in the economy is going to be mild and not extreme like it was before.
Mayor showed up today.
Now, we, uh, you know, if we don't split it any other ways, it'll be a split between the county and the city, and I'm saying this from commissioners. If, uh, you know, the current SPOS, twenty sixteen, we allocated money to Chekel. Would y'all want to ask Chekel for a list of projects, so we can look at what they'd like to fund and consider? I think by law, we don't have to, I think they'd challenge us on that, but, but, uh...
I think they deserve, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, money's collected there. Okay, so we'll plan on asking them for a list of projects, and they will fund this SPOS, and we'll, we'll see what we do there. And of course, uh, GWSC, I believe they're already working on that list.
They're gonna be ready for us.
So, uh, which is pretty much what we have going on with 2016. Just moving on, uh, to the list of things here that have been around since the retreat meeting. I don't know if we want to go down and talk about these things this meeting or not, there's a lot here.
There is.
But I would ask that each of you look at this list, and if you like something that's on there, fine. But if you see something on here that gives you great heartburn, let's talk about it. And then we'll, you know, ma- ma- maybe we can, maybe we can refine the list in that manner. And, uh, because we're gonna have to get some pricing, we, we don't want to get any pricing on anything that we're not gonna do. If the board sees something on here, collect, they'll be doing what I want to do, because that puts staff into looking for numbers. If we're not going to approve something to, to begin with, we don't want to responsibility, we don't need to go there.
Well, this is about a billion dollars right here.
Yeah, that's about a billion.
We've got that, right?
Well, yeah, we got that, we got that covered.
Or if there's something else that comes in mind that you, but, but that's, uh, here in the next couple of weeks or so, if there's something else you can think of, you want to put on here, get it to Allen.
My suggestion is you add one project on here, cut four.
Cut four, there you go.
And Mr. Chirby, what if, what if we, uh, what if we go through and, and choose ten that we like, five that we really don't like, and then compare notes? And, uh, and if we've got something that's not on here, add it and cut some more, like, like Mr. Brunson said. We're gonna do.
Get out.
And then, it, it would be a way to narrow it and see what we have, uh, where we're, have things in common versus...
I don't know, there's so many items, if you pick ten you like and five you don't. You've got a whole lot of projects that are worthy, I'm looking at, there, there's a lot of things that haven't been done in this community that need to be done.
And, and some of them are big ticket items, and some of them aren't, but, but, but at least it would give us, it would give us a place to make first cut.
Well, I hope we're looking at big ticket items, I, I mean, I hate to see us get.
Well, you got a new, uh, new courthouse addition, if you look on the, that's across that forty million dollar debt.
At least, at least.
I thought we were talking, uh, trying to go with nothing vertical, ever, in, in the. In the...
Well, I don't, I don't believe in that. I mean, I think we should come up with worthy projects and then discuss them, I mean. Because the only thing that should knock it out is if Erin tells us it's not legal to do. And now, we may decide not to do a project, but to, I think all we should discuss.
Yeah. Well, I can tell you, if you just look at the drainage projects. Anybody that's been a commissioner for a while, they understand we have drainage issues all over this county. And some of these things probably don't amount to a lot of money. But if you're in an area where these drainage issues are affecting you, it's a major issue for you. So, yeah, we, I probably take as many calls about drainage I have any.
Yeah.
I don't know, I just think we need to individually as commissioners go and look at these things now. I didn't pay a lot of attention to them back when we had our retreat. We had too many other things on the plate. But let's look through them, and we'll have, we'll schedule another work session to talk about them, and see if we need to refine them daily.
Could I get a, just a copy of the current list, listed by just, so I can kind of look at them and maybe use that as a reference?
Sure.
Commissioner Coleman, if I can, real quickly, I just briefly looked back through our last SPOSS, and I don't think we ever have had a six-year SPOSS. We've had mostly four and five years, with a two and a three and a half years sprinkled in there, but I can't find anywhere we've had a six-year SPOSS.
This is the first time we've ever had one three and a half, or less than five?
SPOSS one was two years. Every other one was four or five years, and then until this last one, which is three and a half years.
Well, I think we get all this out. Get the public awareness on it right here. And, I mean, we won't, we need to get feedback like we always have, but I don't know that this current SPOSS, three and a half year current SPOSS, I mean, did it do anything? Did they accomplish anything? I mean, do we think that it, three and a half years was something that helped the voters approve it? Or, I mean, I just, I'm to the notion that give them an honest list of projects, this is how much it's going to cost, we're running for this length of time, end of conversation. I mean, they either are or they aren't, so I don't, I don't think that run time on the thing. I don't, I may get wrong.
You don't think we got any points for that? Well, I think there was a discussion at the time that, you know, maybe this SPOSS project set out that handle. Probably, we wanted to make a statement that we were going to get in and get out and do basically, you know, non-vertical infrastructure, which had been neglected, and so that was the prevailing wisdom at the time. But I agree with you, I'm not sure that we can go ahead and do it five years. Not lose any, end of the day, the voters have got to vote for it, if they don't, then, you know, it's been in our wells.
Well, it's my understanding this Harley County and the state, it doesn't have a SPOSS ongoing.
And if this one, if there's any county that ought to have one, it's this one.
Yeah. On the courthouse project, and I'm not going to go over, go back to the Herry study. You remember the Herry study? It was a good study, in my view, very good. We have issues with having enough courtroom available in those states. We were having issues back then, and I'm just wondering, it's such a big ticket, this is an item on here, and it's going to be tackled soon or later, it's one of those things, we can keep kicking can down the road, we go ahead and deal with it. And would it be helpful if we have a couple of judges come over and talk to us about
What they need?
What they see going on over there?
Yeah.
Okay.
What they're, what they foresee in the future? I heard somebody tell me the other day, they had like 97 cases that are just sitting there pending, getting them lined up in the courts, and that's a lot, isn't it? I mean, I think, I don't know, I don't know that much about it, but if you've got that many now, what are we going to have down the road?
Yes, yeah. Well, that's, that's, that's something we're tasked to deal with. And we don't run the courts and all that, but we got to provide a place for justice. This is a problem that's not going to get any better with time. So let's look at maybe, call them. You know, Judge Scarlett. See if, see if he wants to come over, talk to us about the situation in the work session. And probably the sooner the better, that item. And the board really needs to decide if they want to keep that item on there or take it off, because that's, that's a lot of millions of dollars for what if we do up there.
Yes, sir, I'll be glad to contact them, and as the board might recall, in February, when you had your retreat, and identified those items of priority for this year, this project was one of the priorities.
Okay. All right, and in the meantime, you all just look at these things over, let's thaw it into them.
Do we, do we know if do we know if the Board of Education is going to try to issue a new E.S.P.O.S.T.?
Have you heard any? I don't know what you're, but I think I heard that they were going to come through another one, but I think I heard it someplace.
What else can they build?
Yeah, we're trying that out.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Have you heard with this, Chiver?
I haven't heard.
Well, what's, what's left to build?
All right, I think that's enough for one day. This being here in the jury.